Okay.
Hey, someone, this is Val. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hello. Thank you.
I think we're all set.
Why is my video still stopped?
We see you.
We can see you.
But I don't see anybody else.
That might be a good thing.
You guys are hard.
Thank you.
All right, I'll watch it on TV.
Just remember there's a delay.
If you turn your TV on, John, turn your sound down all the way on the TV.
And the sound's already down.
Okay. Thank you. The Chair will call the April 21st, 2020 meeting in the City Council order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Hello. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman Desenzo.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
There will not be zoning tonight. We did have the zoning meeting, the combination, but those hearings will come before the City Council on May 19th. Then Chair Leonard recognized Treasure Buscher for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The corporate fund in the month of March had a beginning balance of $15,484,547. We took in total receipts of $91,976. We had total disbursements in the month of March of $81,673, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance in the month of March of $16,456,90. This concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you. Chair Leonard entertained a motion to approve the financial report. So moved.
So moved, Donald.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded by Alderman Donlin. Any discussion? Hall in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, say nay. Motion carries. We will start with Chief Reiney, if he'd come in and do a update on the COVID-19.
Everybody had a good week. It seems like we get up here, these Tuesdays are coming pretty quick. I don't know if you guys, if it's like that with you, but it just seems like, it seems like these weeks are going by really fast, which is good in one aspect. Mainly what we worked on this week with the, really is the city, and we worked on getting the showers available for the winter warming center. We're going to start utilizing those. We were told by our housing group that because the homeless community that agreed to quarantine in themselves, now it's not making showers available for people that normally would. So we're working with Larry and Juan and some of the people on that to get those opened up and in use. So that's going to be a good asset here really, really soon. We're still working to develop our demobilization plan. We have a lot of good resources that we've found. Obviously, we're not the only ones that are thinking about this and what it looks like to get businesses back in and back going. But we still are unsure whether or not that's going to be a local decision. And I want to make that very clear because last week, after I spoke, the Governor was asked about Springfield opening things up and much to his surprise, and that is, that's not, if that's what was said, that's not what I meant. It will not, it is not our decision at this point, but in the event that it becomes our decision, we want to be ready. The videos and the PSAs have pushed out. That's a three or four-week plan, so if you did one yourself, they're not pushing them out all at once because they, they want it to, they want them to be available for the duration of the incident. Even if we do start to relax some restrictions on businesses, that doesn't mean that you turn the lights on and everything's back to normal. Worked with many business owners this week to help guide them. We talked a lot last week about the Mayor's latest executive order or emergency order, and that caused a little chaos in the business community because of some of the wording and, and, you know, we've, we've been probably, we've probably worked with 30 business owners this week. Every single person has been cooperative, every single one. We have not had one bad experience. Most of them were doing what we wanted before we got there. We do still field, field some complaints. It seems like one store in general, I get a lot of complaints about, but every time we go in there, they're doing the right thing. And so I'm not sure what that, what's going on there. And then we had a few, a few of the smaller stores basically just wanting to be able to compete on the same level as the, as the bigger box stores, and we understood what they were saying, and we made, we basically were able to allow them legally through the state's order to operate. They maybe were a little over cautious in their initial, what they were doing, so we've worked with, with those businesses to help them be able to sell their product, which is obviously what all business wants to do. I can't even read my own handwriting here. Steps, oh, the steps that are taken are working. We must continue to listen to the experts, and that's what we're going to do. And I said that earlier on, when I was interviewed on the news, that, you know, you don't, you just have to listen to them, trust their judgment. I'm sitting in a room with them every day, and nobody is happy that we're in this situation, but they're giving us their expert advice. We know what we're doing is working because the numbers are low. That's not an accident. That's not a coincidence. It is because what we are doing is working. So we just want to make sure that we continue to listen to their expertise. The best analogy I heard was somebody said, you know, if you jump out of an airplane, just because that parachute slowed you down for 90% of your trip, doesn't mean you take it off for the last 10% of your trip. And I thought that was a pretty good analogy. You don't want to take your, your parachute off with 200 feet to go because that's still too soon. So that's really all I have, unless you have questions.
Alderman Redpath.
Chief, you're doing a great job, and I know your team realizes the situation everybody's in, and I, along with all the rest of the Aldermen, probably the Mayor and everybody else, are getting calls from all the businesses about special considerations. And I know the Governor has, has made reference to possibly opening up by region, maybe even by county, don't know. Do you have any indication if that's something that they're going to, he said he's got some announcements coming. Is that something that's coming soon?
You know, the only thing I can say is that's the impression I got today when I listened to his press conference. He was asked specifically about golf courses, and I, there was nothing I heard today that led me to believe that he wasn't, that the restrictions aren't going to be relaxed when this, when this expires. But as far as firsthand knowledge, no.
And, and, you know, like the golf courses, I talked to people on the park board, and they said, we're not doing anything until the Governor says so. So that's the way that's going to happen. Barbers and beauticians and restaurants, everybody's ready to go, but I understand that we got to, you know, shelter in place for a little longer, but yeah, that's a big deal.
Yeah, it is. It's, it's a big deal, and it's not, you know, even when those decisions, if and when those decisions do become ours, they're still going to be difficult decisions to make.
Thank you.
Because while I, you know, while I can agree that there are, as long as businesses are able to meet certain criteria, there are certainly going to be those that won't be able to do that. And those are, but you know, we, that's what we do. We, we work with the business community on a day-by-day basis. Our fire inspectors do that all the time. They do a wonderful job, and they're continuing that.
You know, one of the things that these folks are saying to me, and maybe to the other Aldermen, is like barbers and beauticians can take one, individual appointments, and they could do it in protective gear and that kind of thing. Lady says a dog groomer, she says, I only take one at a time. And so those are areas that need consideration, if you can relay that in some way.
If, yeah, if that ever becomes our decision, we'll certainly take that into consideration.
Yeah, we are with the city of Springfield, but also the Illinois Municipal League. They're putting together recommendations from different cities on that very aspect. And so it's just not that you'd ask for a request of the lightening up the restrictions. I would see it as how can some businesses operate under the current format, you know, grab-and-go or whatever, or like you pointed out, doing scheduling. So it's the purpose, and then you'd have to specify how are you going to be socially distant and compliant with the current law. And if you could prove that point, then I think they'll take it into consideration. But it, again, it's, the Chief's right. You have to take this gradual approach, and that's what needs to happen because you don't want everything that we've done for the past month go for naught. So I think they are looking at the regional aspect because you can't, Chicago's totally different from this area because of the density, so that's consistent throughout the country, you know, with regards to that. So I'm sure the Governor's taking a look at that and his team associated with that. But they're going to have the science, you know, rely on the healthcare providers to make recommendations as well. Mr. Mayor. I've shown Alderman Gregory and then Alderman McMenamin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I just had a couple of questions about the winter warming shelter that took away. Do we know how long we're going to keep that open? I know we'll probably go to 4:30 with a possible extension. Are we planning on doing that as well? And then my second question would be, for those individuals who, we know it's getting warmer and stuff, and I, I know that we had some of that population leave out of our winter warming shelter, you know, it's nice out and certainly understandable. If, if they by chance get in a situation where they want to come back, do we have a process for that, or are they just out for good? I'm sort of concerned about that. I ran into that a few weeks ago, and, you know, I would hope that there's a process in place if, if somebody wants to, you know, come back, whether or not that involves, you know, quarantining or not, I don't know, but I definitely think there needs to be a process for that.
So your first question, just to make sure I understood it correctly, were you talking about time of day or time of year?
Well, as far as, how many, are, are we going to, you know, if we extend, if the Governor extends the, the order, are we going to extend our winter warming shelter there? Are, are our numbers low enough to close it, or?
That, that is a conversation. I can tell you, Alderman, most of the people that we asked to stay, stayed. They did exactly what we wanted them to do.
Okay.
We, we track those numbers every day, and we've had, we've had one or two leave, but it hasn't been dozens. And so they've done exactly what we've wanted. Obviously, you know, those conversations will take place at a time if and when we get further direction from the protection in place order, and we know what we're dealing with. As far as your second question, this is going to sound harsh, and you're probably not going to like the answer, but no, there's really not a mechanism for them to return because then they're just cross-contaminating people that were already there that agreed to do what we were asking them to do. And that was explained to them very well. And, and not everybody that left, left and went out to the streets. Some of them were able to make alternate arrangements to get into family members' homes, even on a temporary basis. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't like to be the bearer of bad news. We, we certainly encouraged them to stay for their own protection and for the protection of others. But once they left, you just really didn't have a mechanism to allow them back in just because you have to start that process all over again with everybody.
Right, 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 right. Thank you. I appreciate it. I just hope, you know, I thank goodness that, that we've got warm weather and, you know, you know, a little bit of weather. If it was colder and stuff, I'd definitely be highly concerned about that. Thanks, though. I appreciate it.
Hey, no problem. Alderman McMenamin, then Alderman Hanauer.
Chief, two brief questions. Have we had any positive COVID cases at any Springfield nursing homes or in nursing homes in the villages that join Springfield? That's question number one. And then question number two is, have we had any positive COVID cases in any of the hardware stores in the Springfield area?
I believe both have been on the news. I believe there was a case in the hardware store in Springfield was on the news this morning, and the only positive cases I'm aware of are outside of Springfield but in the county for extended care facilities, yes.
Was that in a extended care facility of a village that joined Springfield?
That is correct, yes.
Do we know how many cases were in the, that extended care facility?
I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it's five or seven.
Has that been in the news?
I believe it's been released. I'm not sure if it's made the news yet.
So that's bad news. Is that correct?
Well, certainly, yeah, it's bad news.
I think so. I think it's very upsetting news, so we have to keep our guard up.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I guess this goes to, to you and Director McCarty. You know, it, all indications are this is going to be extended at least, you know, mid-May or maybe into May through the, from the Governor. That's about a sixth of our budget, sixth of our year. What are we doing to, to make sure that there's no, no spending, non-essential spending? Because I'm concerned about spending any money at this stage of the game because at the end of the year, we're going to have to, we're going to have to have some tough choices. And so I just want to know if, if we've put that out there to the directors and to the departments? Are we watching very strictly the credit cards? If, if anything, I think we should pull the credit cards unless people absolutely need them. We need to save every bit, every dime we can.
Yeah, on that, two things. One, on the procurement cards, we are taking a look at that whole process for that purpose, and then it should only make sense if the individual has it, so that'll be revamped. Amanda Long, I believe, is working on that and purchasing. And then all the directors are looking at their budgets to cut 5%, but we'll probably have to go beyond that, so we're looking at the hiring. I know we've had it slowed down, but we'll probably look at a hiring freeze where if a department wants to hire someone, they'd have to do a write-up and it'd come before me and make that determination.
And that's, that's consistent with the direction I've been given from both the OBM and the Mayor.
Well, are we watching our overtime and everything else, too? Because that's an area that, that seems to, it looks like we got something coming up next week on the overtime, and, and we need to, people need to understand that this could potentially, this could be some, some furloughs or whatever down the road. I, I don't want to think of that, but, but we, we have to kind of forecast it, and we, we get that, we get this quarters report, what, next quarter? When, when would we expect to see that?
Yeah, I'm going to have Director McCarty, probably what we'd have as a good month to give a presentation would be in June because we'll have some solid numbers at that point in time and have a firmer grasp on what to expect, or what happened actually in March and then April. And then as far as the overtime goes, you know, we're tracking that and hopefully get reimbursement through FEMA, but time will tell on that. So that's one of the initiatives that's being pushed through. I know they're considering another relief package this go-around, which would be for small businesses, I believe hospitals, and I think there's a third piece. I think the one after that, that they're talking about already would be relief to the states and cities. But with the FEMA, we'll have Director McCarty give an update next, next week at the committee as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
On the FEMA aspect. Anything you want to add to that, Chief?
No.
Any other questions for Chief? So I'm going to bring the other Chief in since it's a related matter. Make it easy.
We'll make it a one-way.
That's right. I know some had questions, and I know the Chief sent out an email with regards to situation down at the Capitol, so I don't know if you have an update to provide, or?
Obviously, it took a lot of questions over the last couple of days about the protests that was at the Capitol, why, why it was allowed to go on, et cetera. First and foremost, that is the Secretary of State Police, Capitol Police's jurisdiction. We have been working hand-in-hand with them since their inception. We've been dealing with these protests for years and years. Early last week, we started getting information about a potential protest that was going to happen at the Capitol. We contacted the Capitol Police. Their plan was that they were going to allow it to occur, and that basically we would do as we had done in the past. We worked together on a plan to make sure that we, it went off peacefully. That's what we did down there. Our officers did a great job in being able to use minimal force to maintain order down there. There was a couple of times when people wanted to block the roads, et cetera. We had to get out. We had to deal with it. Obviously, you know, we're used to dealing with people who are extremely rude and belligerent. We had a little bit of that going on. With that said, the, the magic question everybody wants to know is, does the Governor's order trump your right to the First Amendment under the U.S. Constitution? And that's not a question that anybody can answer for us right now. So with that said, we are aware of additional protests that may come forward. There are actions we're taking behind the scenes. I'm not going to discuss them here publicly, but there are things we are doing behind the scenes to address some of these issues. But again, you know, the goal is we will assist the Secretary of State Police, as well as the Illinois State Police, on these upcoming protests or potential protests that may occur, and we will handle them appropriately like we have in the past.
Do you have any question? Alderman Redpath.
Chief, I understand that we're standing up for people's rights to protest, but I think that they still have to follow the rules with, we're not issuing any permits to protest, and don't we, don't we have to do that?
The permit would have been issued by the Secretary of State Police for their grounds, and...
They did issue a permit?
No, they did not issue a permit, but their, their stance is right now that in the past, people have shown up and done these pop-up protests, and they allow them even without a permit to protest, and all is peaceful.
As long as they don't block traffic, that's all we...
That is correct. We will take care of that, as, as we did this week. That's when the issue started, is when they started trying to block traffic, et cetera, and that's when we stepped up and got involved.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the Chief? I bet you were about to want to ask anything. Thank you. Oh, Alderman, no. Okay, Alderman Gregory?
Yes, Chief, I just wanted to, I think, I think, you know, from what I got from, from the calls and, and things that I got, I think the, the, more so, it wasn't the protest. I think a lot of people recognize that's a fine line when we, when we deal with protesters and, and the right to do that. I think more so, many of people's concerns was the protection of our police officers, and, you know, with PPE, we don't want any of them sick and things of that nature, and, and as well as, as some of the aggression that we did see when they were stopped in the streets and things of that nature, you know, that, that definitely were the main things that I received, and, you know, I, I definitely, you know, sat back and watched the video a little bit of it, and, you know, I was, I was a little surprised, you know, that they would, that, you know, some would be toe-to-toe with our officers and not, not moving quick enough, and, you know. But overall, good job. I think, I, I know you guys will be prepared for the next one. I, I know you guys will be ready for it, so, you know, keep working, and, you know, if I can help in any way, I definitely will.
No, thank you for your comments. And obviously, we've counseled those officers about why they did not have their PPE on. That is the one concern that I had coming out of the videos. Everything else that they did, I thought was appropriate. Obviously, you know, you don't want to do anything that's going to incite the situation, and I'm not going to get into tactics, but I think our officers were able to accomplish what we wanted, which was basically clear the road with as minimal force as needed and to get people to comply, and that's what occurred.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Very good. Someone that is wearing his PPE is the Inspector General, so if you'd like to come forward, Roger, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I think, hopefully, the Aldermen that are remote received an email or hopefully a copy of the report. If not, you'll receive that.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Corporation Council. First thing I learned today is that after six or seven weeks, I can still tie a tie. First time in a long time. All right, I have two reports to share with you this evening, and Judge Milik and the alternate Inspector General will have an additional report. The first one is 2020 OIG III, and it is the Winter Warming Center report. You, those of you who are with us remotely should have received one by email earlier this afternoon. I've given hard copies to the members who are here in person. The investigation of issues relating to the Winter Warming Center, which I'll here and after refer to just as the center, were brought to me by Mayor Langfelder and asked that I look into some allegations of perhaps mismanagement and improper treatment. This investigation has been delayed at the outset. Several people that I needed to speak to were out of the city. Then, of course, we had the stay-at-home order, and my office splintered into 50 remote offices, which took a little bit of time to adjust to, so that has also slowed the investigation. And finally, late in the investigation, the respondent, the employee whose conduct is being questioned, finally responded to my request to speak. So the Winter Warming Center, as you know, is a 1015 East Madison, and it's operated in a building which the city of Springfield owns, but that building is leased to the Salvation Army Heartland Division, which is an Illinois not-for-profit corporation, and I have reviewed the lease, which runs from October 2019, signed in October 2019, runs from November 1st through April 30th. And then the center is operated by the Salvation Army pursuant to a block grant, and all personnel working at the Warming Center are Salvation Army employees. On February 28th, I was given a tour of the building by Springfield Community Relations Director Juan Huerta on short notice, and I did that specifically so that I would get a true snapshot of, of what the center looked like that day. And overall, I was quite impressed. The, the outside of the building is tired from years of its commercial use, but the building interior was in very good condition, thanks to Lowe's, who donated laminate flooring for the intake and dining area, new carpeting throughout the rest of the building, and paint for all of the interior walls. In addition to those upgrades, an additional emergency exit was installed for this 2019-2020 season, bringing the total number of emergency exits to two and the total number of egress-ingress points to five. I noted that there were fire alarms placed throughout the building with pull stations and audiovisual warning devices located throughout. Emergency lighting was evident throughout, and a number of fire extinguishers were placed within the building, and each had a tag that read that they had been serviced and certified in 2019. All of the equipment that I viewed, the safety equipment, appeared to be in new or very new condition. Throughout the building, there were postings by the Springfield Fire Marshal indicating a limitation of occupancy to 60 clients and four Salvation Army employees at any one time, and this was due to the lack of a sprinkler system in the structure. As we all know, sprinkler systems are very expensive to install, and according to Salvation Army Captain Eddie, this building is scheduled for demolition in 2023 due to the Springfield Railroad relocation project. I toured the entire facility that day, and there were sleeping mats located throughout the sleeping areas, and a number of these mats had personal belongings placed on them, such as backpacks and suitcases. The entire building had a clean smell, with the exception of a few of the backpack items. The building has old bathroom facilities, which are serviceable and adequate, adequate, and in February 2020, surveillance cameras were installed. So what is a low-barrier shelter? Centers described as a low-barrier shelter, which means unlike other local shelters, potential clients are not turned away as a result of intoxication, being under the influence of drugs, or exhibiting mental health issues. Goes without saying that this is the very most difficult and challenging type of homeless shelter to operate. The center is open from November 1 through March 31, and of course, as Chief Reiney mentioned, it is still operating at an alternate location today. it is still operating at an alternate location today. The center actually opened one day early this season because of cold weather conditions. Center is open from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. Monday through Friday, and from 5:00 p.m. through 8:00 a.m. on Saturday and Sunday. The center operates seven days a week for at least 152 continuous days. In 2019, the center was open with very little preparation time due to the cancellation of a proposed multidisciplinary homeless facility on 11th Street, which did not materialize. For the past five years, the center has been operated by Helping Hands, and for the period before that five-year period, the Salvation Army and Helping Hands alternated years operating the center. Salvation Army Springfield Office reports to Salvation Army Headquarters in Peoria, which Headquarters has a history of operating low-barrier shelters in Peoria and Bloomington. According to Captain Jeff Eddy, head of the Springfield Salvation Army operation, the Salvation Army Peoria Headquarters has a team of people who know how to operate low-barrier shelters. This team came to Springfield to assist in setting up the center and conducted a week of interviews of potential employees for jobs that were advertised on a website called Indeed. Following a week of interviews, a staff of 13 was hired, with Captain Eddy having the final say as to who was hired. Prior to the center's opening, Salvation Army Peoria Headquarters team conducted training for all of the new hires using a program called Safe From Harm, which teaches employees how to work with vulnerable adults in a volatile environment while keeping both clients and staff safe. Thereafter, before opening, the Springfield Police Department came to train new staff members in de-escalation techniques, proper search procedure, and anti-human trafficking watchfulness. Total of the Salvation Army and Springfield Police Department training was approximately eight hours. The Salvation Army has received a block grant from the city of Springfield of $50,000 and received a $10,000 donation from HSHS Hospital System to provide the 150-plus days of the center operation with a onsite staff of four at a time. In reviewing the number of hours needed to staff the operation seven days a week for five months, it becomes obvious that the employees are paid at or near minimum wage or slightly above. Captain Eddy observed that in addition to the compensation, trained social workers are not interested in taking a five-month job. Salvation Army, Salvation Army Social Services employees, trained in homeless outreach, however, were often present during the 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. period. Despite concerns expressed in the community, Captain Eddy denied ever staffing the center with temporary employees from labor-ready or any similar staffing operation. So what is the Warming Center and what isn't the Warming Center? There's been significant discussion about the role that the center plays in the care of the Springfield homeless community, and many in the community have expressed their expectations of the level of service. The center accepts persons who are under the influence of alcohol and suffer the effects of alcohol consumption, but it is not an alcohol treatment center. The center accepts persons who are suffering from mental health issues, some of whom exhibit symptoms ranging from being withdrawn to being easily agitated or physically threatening, but the center is not a mental health treatment center and provides no service such as diagnosis, treatment, or medication. The center accepts persons who are addicted to substances other than alcohol and who may have been consuming immediately prior to entering the center, but the center has no ability to treat substance abuse clients. Captain Eddy summed it up succinctly as possible when he told me, "Our job is to keep people warm, get them a hot meal while they are with us, and to keep them alive." As he observed, there is no treatment services available for any of the clients, many of whom are turned away by traditional shelters because of their drug, alcohol, and mental health issues. I began my investigation by watching, from the comfort of home, the February 18th, 2020 City Council meeting, which at the conclusion of a lengthy budget meeting, turned to the issue of problems with the center. Among those addressing the City Council that night were Reverend Susan Phillips, pastor of First Presbyterian Church at Seventh and Capitol, Joe O'Neil, who had attempted to investigate allegations of employee misconduct by spending the night, but which experience was shortened and of great concern to Mr. O'Neil, and also addressing the council were Captain Jeff Eddy, who is in charge of the Springfield Salvation Office and in turn, operation of the center. In my later meetings with Reverend Phillips and Joe O'Neil, I gave each a number of my business cards with contact information, asked if they distribute this to homeless people with whom they had contact. I did so because both expressed an observation that the homeless community was reluctant to come forward or identify themselves because of fear of retribution by one center employee. I asked them to assure the homeless community that as Inspector General, I can offer anonymity to any person whom I interview. Pastor Phillips even granted my request to conduct interviews at her church rather than at a downtown law office where I normally conduct complaint and witness interviews. I felt that meeting at the church would be less intimidating for the homeless population, which I wished to interview. Despite the efforts of Reverend Phillips and Joe O'Neil, I received absolutely no response from any homeless citizen. So concerns regarding the behavior of a particular Warming Center employee, who here and after I'll refer to as respondent, I next reviewed the tape of the City Council's December 17th, 2019, meeting, during which Reggie Witherspoon addressed the City Council regarding complaints that he had heard about the center. Included among them was misconduct by the staff, disrespectful conduct by a staff member, and theft of items such as cell phones and medications. Mr. Witherspoon acknowledged that all of the issues he was relaying were hearsay from members of the Springfield homeless community, who are clients of the center and confidants of Mr. Witherspoon. Juan Huerta, Community Relations Director for the city, was present at that December 17 meeting and addressed the council, telling them that he was there almost every evening and that all was going well. Many of Director Huerta's comments created the impression that he and the city were running the center, but at the conclusion of his remarks, he correctly stated that the Salvation Army is running the center. It is a matter of concern, however, that Director Huerta seemed at first to create the impression that the city was running the center, which is directly contradicted by the lease turning the building over to the Salvation Army and the block grant that enables the Salvation Army to operate the center. Director Huerta indicated that things were going well at the center and that even Alderman McMinniman and Alderman Gregory had served meals at the center and had positive comments. Several other Aldermen indicated that they were hearing that there may be issues of improper treatment of the center by its managers. In later discussions with Captain Eddy of the Salvation Army, he stated that a particular employee had emerged as a leader, hereafter referred to as respondent, was being paid slightly more than the other employees. At the conclusion of the December 17th council meeting, Mr. Witherspoon indicated that he requested that clients of the center who had complained to him were asked to report their complaints to Reverend Phillips or to the City Council, but that all had refused to come forward. A concern raised, was raised that the respondent is a city employee. In fact, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Monday through Friday, respondent is an employee of the city of Springfield, working for the city Community Relations Department under the supervision of Juan Huerta as an investigator into housing and landlord tenant and employment discrimination matters. His city employment began three and a half years ago, and he has no negative items in his city human resources file. The conduct of respondent complained of occurred only in the context of the center, where he was an employee of the Salvation Army and not serving it as employee of the city of Springfield. According to the city Human Resources Department, there is a signed secondary employment document signed off by his department director at Community Resources. I note that at the time, the city of Springfield Secondary Employment Form did not contain a line for the Human Resources Department to approve the document, but HR has since added a signature line for their approval. The issue of respondent's conduct surfaced again at the February 18th, 2020, meeting of the City Council. Reverend Phillips, Citizen Joe O'Neil, and Captain Eddy all addressed the City Council again regarding issues of a disrespectful and vulgar treatment of center clients. At that meeting, allegations were made by Joe O'Neil, who attempted to spend the night at the center and who was treated with great disrespect and foul language, and who had observed other center clients being treated equally disrespectfully. Mr. O'Neil also observed that as a part of the intake process, a center employee was using a metal detection wand and displayed a lack of knowledge of the proper procedure by stopping the wand above the ankles, where weapons could be concealed in a sock or shoe. Reverend Phillips recounted an experience by members of her congregation who volunteered to provide meals at the center. Specifically, on January 16, 2020, a church member was attempting to seek help from the clients to bring food trays, which help was routinely given in the past, when she was confronted by respondent and treated disrespectfully and yelled at. The food team member recounted that she witnessed respondent treating the clients roughly and was gruff with them. Thus, the concern is not only were the center clients being treated disrespectfully, but community volunteers were subject to the same disrespectful conduct by the respondent. Discussions were also had regarding reports that a healthcare professional who attempted to provide services were treated extremely disrespectfully. Should be noted, in a later interview with Captain Eddy, he acknowledged to me that he had been made aware of the treatment of the medical professional in question. Following the February 28, 2020, City Council meeting, respondent's employment with the Salvation Army was terminated. In the days immediately following the February 18th City Council meeting, I met with both Reverend Susan Phillips and Joe O'Neil in separate private meetings. Joe O'Neil shared with me a report that he had prepared following his January 24 visit to the center, which report had been forwarded to the mayor on January 27. His written report summarized that the employee in question had no business working at any WWC. His skill set lacks sensitivity, patience, empathy, people skills, and the most basic communication skills that are vital when working with vulnerable people. It is as though he enjoyed pouring fuel on the flames and handing out his intimidation factor to every homeless person he came in contact with. His abusive authority and foul mouth is appalling. Several persons I interviewed recorded concern regarding a mentally ill woman who was turned away from the shelter, turned out of the shelter at 10:00 p.m. I inquired of Captain Eddy about this incident, and he was familiar with it and stated that there is a cigarette break at 8:00 p.m., where clients who wish to smoke are escorted outside for a smoking period. The woman in question, in the crowded confines of the sleeping area at approximately 10:00 p.m., started to light a cigarette and refused repeated requests to extinguish the cigarette lighter. As mentioned earlier, there is great concern about fire risks at the center, and center employees are trained to spot fire hazards. Because of this woman's refusal to extinguish a fire hazard, she was removed from the facility and banned for a three-day period. It's a particularly problematic situation in which the Salvation Army had to weigh the fire danger to the entire population of the center against exposure to winter temperatures when the woman in question was removed. It is clear that removal was necessary, but a better procedure would have had an alternate means available to protect the removed client from exposure, such as taking her to the Sangamon County Jail waiting room, which allows homeless to sleep overnight. It does appear the woman's family was contacted. An additional concern expressed in the first, first in the hearsay allegations made by Reggie Witherspoon in December of 19, also raised by others, was that a female employee was physically abusive to a client. In my interview of Captain Eddy, he indicated that he had never heard such an allegation. None of the more than 20 witnesses that I interviewed could recall such an incident when directly asked. Mr. O'Neil's report raised an observation regarding the check-in process, wherein backpacks and other containers brought in by the clients during intake were searched, and that food items and water bottles were discarded. I discussed this with Captain Eddy, and he said that was a longstanding procedure from prior years. Water bottles were confiscated because they were frequently used to sneak alcoholic beverages into the center, and food items were not allowed in the sleeping area because they attracted insects and vermin. Captain Eddy reported, and I later personally observed, that there were cases of bottled water available from the time of intake of clients that they could consume during their overnight stay and could take with them when they left in the morning. Captain Eddy also stated there were always food items that were available to send with the clients when they departed in the morning. Pursuant to the Inspector General ordinance, I reached out to respondent to give the opportunity to speak with me. We thereafter had a...
Mr. Mayor, any point of order? Yes. This is an outstanding report, and you're really addressing in very detailed manner the concerns and the issues and so forth. We Aldermen only received the written version this afternoon, and we've been going for 18 minutes, and you're halfway through the reports. That means I think we'd be going 36 minutes. And I just wonder, Mr. Mayor, if it'd be helpful if all the Aldermen had a chance to read the written report, and then we could invite the Inspector General back for a discussion of the report, or if maybe you could summarize some of the findings, just trying to be helpful, because this is a very lengthy report, and we're only halfway through.
I'd be happy to give more of a summary of the rest of it, and also would be happy to return after all of the Aldermen have had an opportunity to review the report and answer questions.
And the report's going to be online anyway, so I think the remainder of the report goes into the respondent replies, and like Paula McMinniman said, very thorough, and so if you want to kind of summarize that and whatever you so choose.
Basically, the respondent felt that he was being improperly terminated and humiliated, and that he's not the kind of man that Mr. O'Neil was painting him to be. Thereafter, I interviewed 10 of the other 12 original employees, and there's a series of quotes from them, most very complimentary of the respondent. Skipping to the conclusion, this investigation has been complicated by confusion as to who was running the center. Expectations that the center would be a full-service facility and the inherent challenges in operating a low-barrier shelter for five months, seven days a week, on a very limited budget. Two items that concerned me the most were the length of time from first allegations against the respondent for his behavior, and two months later, his termination by Salvation Army. And my other concern, Director Huerta is very proud of the building, but in the process, may have created some confusion that the city was in charge of the Winter Warming Center when it is not. I compliment Salvation Army for getting the center up as quickly as they did on short notice, and the accommodation for the social distancing of COVID-19. So with that, I will move on to my other very brief report. On March 19th, I received an anonymous email regarding concerns that if the Springfield Fire Department rookie class was doing their morning exercise at a gym facility owned by a firefighter. The anonymous email was concerned that the firefighter was receiving money from the city fire department. Bottom line is, the firefighter was providing his gym facilities at no charge to the city. The firefighter in question is in the position of a trainer, and that opportunity is available to all Springfield Fire Department personnel. So I closed the report with no finding of any impropriety and no recommendations. Judge Milik will present a report. I received an anonymous letter recently. I recused myself because the person's conduct who was questioned, husband is my granddaughter's grade school teacher, fifth grade teacher, fourth grade teacher at Isles Elementary. I've interacted with her husband... I've interacted with her husband at parent-teacher conferences and other times, and my wife volunteered in his classroom at least one day a week. So feeling that I should distance myself and avoid any appearance of impropriety, I turn that matter over to Judge Milik.
Very good. John Milik?
Mayor, council members. Yes, I received the conflict case from Judge Holmes. It alleged that Alderwoman Conley, at the February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty meeting, was, had a conflict of interest in proposing a number of judge, a number of positions for the payroll that were union positions, and she is a union member with her employment through the state of Illinois. I reviewed the correspondence. I watched the budget meeting of two thousand and eighteen, February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. I researched the matter and had a discussion with Alderwoman Conley regarding these allegations. It is my opinion that there is no conflict of interest whatsoever. Alderman, Alderwoman Conley, in her position at the state of Illinois, Anna Union Member, has no benefit or gain or the union from prevailing union positions at the city of Springfield. I then had a discussion with Alderwoman Conley with regard to conflict of issue, conflict of interest issues, which I would succinctly put to the council, that if there is a matter before the city council, and one questions themselves as to their loyalty as to that issue, they should disclose it and recuse themselves. By doing that, as Judge Holmes did in this particular case, you remove any hint of impropriety and don't have to worry about it, and it's a lot easier being handled on the front end than it is on the rear end. So with that advice to everyone, I have no further report, and I don't think there's anything necessary to be done on this matter, and is there any questions?
Any questions of the aldermen remotely, our alderwomen remotely?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one last presentation, Val Yezel. I think she's remote, I believe. She just wanted to give an update.
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me?
Oh, good. Yep. Economic Development Director Val Yezel.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and council members. I will be providing a full report of O P E D's response to the COVID pandemic next week, but as C D B G funding was a topic, topic of conversation last week, I did want to give an update on that this evening. As we all know, a press release was sent March thirtieth stating that the city of Springfield would receive seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars in C D B G funding through the CARES Act. That very next day, I was in touch with Congressman Davis's office, as was the mayor, and the message I received was that guidance would soon come. I reached out to other entitlement communities, including Decatur, McLean, Madison, and St. Clair Counties in Illinois, and they were all receiving the same answer. We had to wait on guidelines. I reached out to our rep in D C., our program manager, community and planning development liaison, the deputy regional manager, and our consultant with HUD, searching for some answers. In the meantime, staff was working diligently on plans to use our existing funds while following the guidelines that we knew we must follow. Last week, I reached out to our liaison in field policy management at HUD and requested a briefing. Friday, the mayor joined my staff and me on an hour-long call with eight representatives from HUD. We were told at that time that we should be receiving guidance and directives within the week. Out of that meeting, several directives were discussed. We were told to strengthen our financial policies and procedures and ensure that we had a strong audit process for these funds that would be coming. Second, we were cautioned to be sure there was no duplication of benefits received from the funding for the CARES Act. C D B G funds should only be used to fill gaps. HUD funding cannot supplant any other sources of funds. This means if a business received funding from the S B I. or other sources of funds from the CARES Act, they would not be eligible for funding from our C D B G funds. We were also reminded that all federal requirements shall remain in place. As there are so many of them, I'm just going to give you a quick example. Some of the requirements say that funding must benefit low-to-moderate income individuals, and another one is that you have to have proper financial documentation. They instructed us to follow these steps, assess our needs, amend our two thousand and nineteen action plan, create a plan for the funding, submit a final statement with sources and uses for all the CARES Act funding, and submit all that to HUD through our I V I S accounting system. Monday, I scheduled a call with our consultants, and we prepared a substantial amendment to our current plan with a placeholder for recommendations for the use of our new funds. I've been working on documentations to ensure there is no duplication in funding and streamlining our application process to be filled out by our grantees when the decisions for the funding are made. Yesterday afternoon, we finally received the official documentation we've been waiting for outlining our guidance. I spent over two hours this morning with my staff poring over these documents, and I'm anxious to move forward. We have scheduled a Community and Economic Development Commission Zoom meeting for this Thursday at three o'clock to discuss with the committee and update them on guidelines and get their input and recommendations. I would invite you to participate if available, and I know Tim has that information for distribution for you. As a requirement for the substantial amendment to our plan, we will also be holding a public Zoom meeting next week. The information on that meeting will be posted on our Facebook page, distributed via the Neighborhood News as soon as it's scheduled. The amendment will be posted on our website, and public comments can be sent via email or a call can be placed to our office. A few of the ideas being considered, not decided on at this point, but being considered, are business assistance for microenterprises and sole proprietors. This particular segment of the business community has not received the attention to date, other than the Paycheck Protection Program that ran out of money a day after they could apply. We are also looking at rental, our mortgage assistance. I would welcome any feedback from any of you, and I appreciate your time this evening, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Alderman Redpath?
Val, so what you're telling us is that there was a concern about the Wi-Fi stuff, about the hotspots that we approved last week. If the school district receives money for that, what happens on our end? Since we've, since we've already committed to-
We're still digging into that. Yes, right, we're still digging into that. There's the possibility we may not be able to pay for it. If we did pay for it, we might have to pay back those funds. So I'm looking into that now because we didn't get guidance until just a few days ago. So believe me, that is on my list, sir.
Well, it's not that I'm opposed to it, I just don't want to be caught with, I mean, I don't want to be in a situation that if we've expended the funds and they get it, then we're going to have to pay the money back. That's all I'm worried about.
Yeah, actually, Tom, actually, Tom Chee has an update, so I don't know if he wants to, is he remote? So Tom Chee's been working on the project, and so he's been working with the company Verizon, and I can't remember the other one, but he does have an update with regards to that.
Hi, good evening. All right, so just a quick update. Over the course of last week, we've been working with Verizon and C S G, the vendor who we purchased those from. We were able to renegotiate the deal because stock is starting to come back, so there was a cost difference between C S G and Verizon, and we are only on the foot, or on the bill for shipping.
Okay, but I've also been contacted that Xfinity Comcast people have already, they're putting out the same hotspots, is that correct?
So Xfinity, from, from my understanding, they have cheaper internet for those in need, but you would still have to sign up through Comcast, and I think part of the barrier for that is they still do like the credit check and everything for that.
So we're not duplicating the service there?
We're not.
That was my only question.
We're not.
Okay, thank you.
So again, school district one eighty-six, I think they're deciding on the service level, and that's probably about a hundred thousand dollars. The hotspots were, you've worked out that arrangement-
Yep.
-with regards to the charges for shipping, and that's it?
Correct.
Very good.
So we're not on the hook for the money, Mayor?
No, I think it's because of our relationship with Verizon and-
Right, yeah.
Just the situation that they were, and that they-
I agree, so I think if the school district were trying to obtain these hotspots, I don't know if that would have been possible. We've got a pretty good relationship with Verizon, and they, they put us in touch with another vendor that they work closely with that had some stock in hotspots. Whenever we, we had reached out to Verizon originally, they were on backorder for close to a month.
It's not that I'm opposed to this, obviously, I just don't want to, I don't want to be in a double jeopardy situation.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
I understand.
Very good. Alderwoman Conley?
Stay here, Tom.
Oh, wait a second. Yeah, go ahead. I think we can hear you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, could you just clarify how much are we, was the shipping then?
The shipping, I don't have the exact number, but it was like one thousand twenty dollars, somewhere around there.
Oh, okay, so instead of the fifty thousand that we heard about last week, it's about a thousand dollars, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Tom? Or for Val? Very good. Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the April seventh, twenty twenty city council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved.
Downward.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Both say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this city council meeting.
So moved.
Redpath.
Duckett.
Been moved and second by Alderman Hanauer. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Redpath.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Redpath, second by Alderwoman De Senzo. Any discussion?
Discussion, Mayor, is this where we discuss any items that are on the consent agenda? There's one item on the consent agenda that has received significant social media discussions in the last few days, both pro and con, having to do with the intersection at Greenbrier. There's an ordinance on the consent agenda, twenty twenty-one five-two, having to do with the intersection at Greenbrier and Koki Mill Road. The, the funding is fifty thousand dollars to study the intersection, not to do any construction, but to review the situation and for eventual lighting at the intersection. Apparently, there's a new subdivision to the west called Creston Place. I believe there's five homes there to this point. We don't know what's going to happen with that subdivision, given the financial meltdown and the economic recession and the virus that's the triple hitter that's taking place throughout the country in Springfield. Then furthermore, that portion of Greenbrier was eventually intending to hook up with a portion of Greenbrier further to the west. I drive this area frequently, and I drove it this morning. Some of the concerns are the same concerns that were expressed by Alderman Turner last week, having to do with how we've got to be really careful with our spending, and what Alderman Hanauer mentioned at the start. We've, we're going to face very significant budget problems going forward, so we have to analyze how we spend our money, and is it an essential spending, or could it be delayed? And so in the case of this particular proposal, I don't see the traffic problem developing for possibly one, two, three years down the road. And given the fact that our infrastructure funds, which is Fund Ninety-five, this has been funded out of Fund Ninety-five, the source of that funding is our general merchandise sales tax, our video gaming revenues and so forth, so we've got to be particularly careful when we spend Fund Ninety-five monies. And I'm not trying to pick on this project in any way, it's just a general concern. Later on, on the debate agenda, we're going to discuss the Kidzium funding, and there too, I think we've got to be very careful. So I'm going to recommend for Kidzium that we, maybe someone else is going to make the same recommendation, that we not deny it, but we just place it on, on hold, that we hold it back in committee to see how our funds are going to be down the road. The Kidzium would be funding through hotel motel taxes, as I recall, and, and our hotel motel rooms are empty, so we've got to take that into consideration. There's another project that's on first reading that Alderman Redpath and I discussed before the meeting, having to do with the, the Shot Spotter, eight hundred thousand dollars for gunshot detection technology. That's technology money that, you know, we may need to spend that on our police and firefighters for actual human intelligence and human personnel costs, so that's another one that I think I'll be a know on. So I'm trying to give the big picture while also talking about the Greenbrier. I would, if, if there's any support for the idea of just holding Greenbrier for six months, move it back to committee and just see where we're at six months from now, just see how desperate we are six months from now. The situation we got with this virus is continuing, it's, it's continuing to spread, it's not going to go away soon, and it's severely impacting our revenue. So those are my concerns regarding Greenbrier. It's on consent agenda right now, so, you know, if there's support for just holding this for six months, you know, that would, I would make the motion, but there's got to be support out there to hold it.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, and this, this is actually in my ward. I'd like to make a couple of clarifications and corrections to Alderman McMenamin's representation. There are significantly more than five homes in the Creston Place subdivision right now, and when that subdivision is completed, this is one that was planned prior to me being on the council. When that, when that subdivision is completed, we're looking at about a hundred and fifty homes, I think it is a hundred and fifty homes. I know Nate Bottoms can probably correct me on some of that. What we're looking at right here is, is expanding an intersection when those homes are completed, so that Greenbrier is more of an artery route that goes from, that goes all the way out and will connect Alderman Hanauer with, with your ward, with Greenbrier to the west. While this, my understanding is yes, this does currently, this is in Fund Ninety-five, I'd certainly be willing to put forward something that we could move this to the motor vehicle, the motor fuel tax fund. I spoke with Director Bottom earlier today about that, that idea. But I do think we need to recognize that the west side is getting built up significantly, that we have more traffic on there currently. I look at people coming in on, on Old Jack, coming east on Old Jack, and that road is extremely busy, it's very heavily traveled, so is Isles to the, to the south of us. This gives another arterial route that gets people in and out of those subdivisions a little more quickly, and I would hope, although I'm probably speaking out of term because I'm not a traffic engineer, but I would hope that would reduce some of the pressures on the other two roads, roads to the north and south. But Director Bottom, if you'd like to speak a little bit about what your, what the plan is with this, and again, my understanding is that this, this intersection was part of the original concept for the subdivision when it was brought forward.
Yeah, Alderman Hanauer, Alderman Hanauer, then we'll go to Nate Bottom on that. Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Well, here's my-
Well, here's my question. It's going to need a light, we know it. Why do we need to spend fifty grand to do a study to tell us that it's going to need a light? Whether it's now or whether it's two years from now, it's going to need a light. Now, I just don't understand why we have to study something that I'm not an engineer, but I know it's going to need a light because it is going to be a major artery going east west on the on the on the west side of town. Some of these studies, we need to start looking at trying to cut back on the number of studies we do. This is, you know, to me, this needs this needs to be done. I don't know that it necessarily needs to be done right away, but why do we need to study it when we know it's going to happen at some point in time? That's what I don't get. It saves us fifty grand.
Yeah, Director Bottom, if you would go over the timeline need and then also what the study would cover, or could we just do it without the study?
For one, it's not a study. This is for the preliminary in design engineering, so this is not a study, so I want to correct that right off the bat. This is so that we can get it shovel ready in order to do the construction. And then it generally takes a year and a half or so to get the plans ready and get all of the approvals in order to utilize motor fuel tax funds or any HSIP funds, should we receive any of those types of funds. In regards to the amount of traffic, it is not needed necessarily for this phase of Creston Place. However, the next phase, Greenbrier is going to be pushed through, which will link up to Mill Creek, which has hundreds of lots, as well as Oak Park Estates and Deerfield subdivision, and Greenbrier is eventually supposed to be connected to Lenhart Road. It is one of our arterials on the arterial roadway network plan, so we want to be proactive and get it designed properly when it and so that we can install it when the signals are warranted.
And do you have a guess or guesstimation of what time that would be, the schedule, or would it hurt prolonging it six months, or what's your expert opinion on that?
We can we can certainly prolong it, it's just going to lengthen the time. We I still believe that if we delay it for a few months, we can still hit a June of twenty-two letting. And who knows what the way the development is and the way that we're going to be impacted. It may be a couple of years before they construct that next phase of Creston Place.
Alderman?
So we can delay it, or we could shift it to motor fuel tax funds if you so choose, and we can pass a prepare resolution for motor fuel tax funds, which will be on a subsequent agenda.
Alderman Conley?
Oh, I was just I was just going to say, thank you, Director Bottom, I appreciate that. Again, this is an area where I definitely am going to kind of yield to people who are more expert at engineering and designing intersections. I'm certainly, I mean, I would be willing to even make the motion to hold it, but I do want to say I've gotten a lot of support and a lot of questions and concerns from people living in that area about the heavy traffic and and what they're dealing with. Do we know, are they doing construction, are they planning construction for the summer for the rest of Creston Place?
I do not know at this time. They're planning on wrapping up this current phase, they're putting in the rest of the infrastructure, and then I do not know at this time, sorry.
Alderman, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Well, I just, I mean, I, again, I'm looking at, we've had accidents with cars going in and out of the Creston Place neighborhood. I've had people contact me with concerns getting out of from Greenbrier onto Koki Mill and, you know, my biggest my biggest concern is the safety of the people who are living there and who need to, you know, we're seeing more traffic. So I would be willing to make a motion to hold this. I don't know that we need to put six months, but if we put it in committee for right now, maybe Director and I could get together, we could talk about this and have a plan that's a little more palatable to everybody. I'm willing to hear what everyone else has to say.
Alderman Fulgenzi? Did you have a comment? No? Okay. Alderman Redpath?
Yeah, I don't think we need to put a timeline on it. Let's just leave it in committee, and if if things work out, we can pull it back out. How's that sound, Aaron?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Again, if but if we start seeing construction on those homes this spring and summer, I am going to be pushing that we, you know, we consider the traffic needs of that neighborhood, all those neighborhoods.
My apologies, Alderman, my apologies. Yes, construction will be starting on the homes. I thought you were talking about the next phase of construction where they push Greenbrier through to Mill Creek. So my apologies. There will, there are plans, we are issuing permits, and I believe there already are a couple that will be will be issued here shortly in regards to that next phase of Creston Place.
Thank you, and that's what I thought, because I thought I'd seen activity in there, didn't know if that was a pre-existing permit or what those plans were. So I'm willing to go ahead and make a motion that we hold this for right now without a timeframe with connected to it.
Alderman Hanauer?
I'll second it.
I have one question on that. So just clarification, Director Bottom is, you said it's a year and a half to study and get it ready for the intersection there? Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm just estimating the amount of time it generally takes to get it ready for a motor fuel tax letting is approximately a year and a half.
So the original timeline was to hit the June of twenty twenty-two letting, is that correct?
That's correct.
So by holding it a month or two, that's not going to miss mess with that timeline?
No, I believe we'll be fine.
Okay.
Mayor?
Alderman Hanauer?
Well, one thing too, I think what it would do is kind of give us an eye, we can go back and try to check with the developer of the other phase of, I guess it's Mill Creek, I think it is, or West Roads, and find out if they're when they're planning on pushing that road through. Because once they push it through, they're the traffic is going to pick up. It's going to take take pressure off of Isles. And at that point, I think we're going to want to get this thing going, so. But I'm comfortable right now, holding it as long as, you know, and as long as Aaron's okay with it, I just want to, I don't want to hold it forever.
And I, again, thank you, Alderman Hanauer, I appreciate that. I just, again, I have gotten quite a number of people contacting me with concerns about about the traffic in that intersection, so this is not something that I want to dismiss or take away. We do have Creston Place is filling up, those homes are selling, so, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm looking on my other screen to figure out exactly which ordinances is to make them an appropriate motion here.
It's twenty twenty dash one fifty-two.
Thank, okay, yep, there it is, thank you.
So there's a motion to move it back to committee, we can always pull it out at the next city council meeting after we verify with the subdivision developer, the timeline that they're going to or plans to build any further houses within that development.
Yes, I
Developments, Mayor, it's not just Creston Place, there's other, there's other developments that'll that'll lengthen Greenbrier.
Okay. Further west of Creston Place, yep.
Okay.
Or if you want to make the motion, Aaron, I'll second it.
I'll make the motion that we hold ordinance twenty twenty one fifty-two in committee for the time being. I want to, just for clarification, I do want to add that I'd like to examine the use of motor fuel tax funds for this study if when we move it back out, so, but my motion is to hold it, thank you.
There's been a motion to send it back to committee and second any discussion and taking a look at the developments in the area as well as the source of funds to use. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor of the consent agenda, with the exception of twenty twenty dash one fifty-two, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory? Alderwoman Turner?
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzi?
Aye.
Alderman Proctor?
Aye.
Alderwoman De Senzo?
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin?
Aye.
Alderwoman Conley?
Yes.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
Ten ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Agenda number twenty seventeen dash one zero three, twenty eighteen dash one ten, twenty nineteen dash zero zero eight, twenty nineteen dash two seven six, twenty nineteen dash four thirty, twenty twenty dash zero four nine, twenty twenty dash zero five seven, twenty twenty dash zero six seven, twenty twenty dash one three four, twenty twenty dash one five eight, twenty twenty dash one five nine, twenty twenty dash one sixty, twenty twenty dash one sixty-one, twenty twenty dash one sixty-two, twenty twenty dash one sixty-three, and twenty twenty dash one sixty-four remain tabled during committee. Is there any action on any of those? The next item on the agenda is twenty twenty dash one fifty-three, an ordinance authorizing execution of a grant agreement with Kidzium for the support activities that increase with Kidzium's presence in the community and staffing needs in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand and one dollar for the Office of Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number twenty twenty dash one fifty-three on final passage.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to send that back to committee for the time being, see if we can get past this COVID nineteen issues and reassess after we see some numbers from the budget team.
Second.
Been moved in second.
Hanauer?
Send back to committee by Alderman Proctor and seconded by Hanauer. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is twenty twenty dash one fifty-four, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to ordinance number zero four four dash zero two dash twenty, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of execution of grant number AJCYZ zero three zero six six from the Illinois Primary Healthcare Association in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for supplemental appropriation and the amount of fifty thousand dollars for funding the twenty twenty census and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for the Office of Planning and Economic Development by authorizing acceptance and execution of an additional eighty thousand dollars for funding for the twenty twenty census and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of eighty thousand dollars for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number twenty twenty dash one five four on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Hanauer, seconded by Alderman De Senzo. Any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Redpath?
So what is this funded out of, Mayor?
It's a grant funding that's been received by the state of Illinois, I believe, to the
So it is a grant?
Right.
Okay, that's all I need, thank you.
Isn't that correct, Director Favre? Yep, it's a grant. Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. All opposed, vote no. The clerk will now read the roll.
Alderman Redpath? Yes. Alderman Gregory?
Yes.
Alderwoman Turner?
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzi?
Yes.
Alderman Proctor?
Aye.
Alderwoman De Senzo?
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin?
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley?
Yes.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
Ten ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is twenty twenty dash one five five, an ordinance approving the execution of a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Springfield and operative Plasters and Cement Masons Local eighteen for a period of from March first, twenty twenty through February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number twenty twenty dash one five five on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? Alderman McMenamin?
Mr. Mayor, this is another situation that calls for a review of our financial situation. This was bargained prior to the financial issues that we're now confronting. It's a four-year contract, that's the real problem, it's a four-year contract. We don't want to get into a situation, and the terms of the contract aren't so bad, you know, prior to all the the economic recession coming before us and so forth, it is one point seven five, I believe it is, per year for each of four years, one point seven five percent. What we might be having going forward, though, would be a cost of living that could go down to zero or less. Yesterday, the future contracts for oil, the May contracts for oil were in negative territory. In other words, the oil, the producers were paying people to take the oil because they had no place to put it because it's such a glut of oil. So, you know, the gasoline is going down, we'll see what else, what other prices go down. So as a city council, when it comes to collective bargaining agreements, our choice is either to accept in full or or turn down in full. We don't, we can't modify the contract, we can't say, okay, we'll take one year and as the city council modify it. So it's either up or down a hundred percent, or, you know, that's our choice. So, Mayor, I think it might be useful to you if we send this back for renegotiation based on the current financial situation that the city is facing for the next four years. We don't know what what half year from now we're going to look like. We know we're going to have a massive cut down of revenue. A week ago, when we were talking about some of the financial financial issues here at the city council, the Peoria City Council was talking about how their shortfall of revenue will be fifty million dollars. They're a sister city to Springfield, so their city council was talking about how where do we come up with fifty million dollars of revenue that we thought we had that now we won't have? So I'll have to be a no vote on this. We got to vote on it. One, we can't put this back to committee because we have to either be, is that correct, Corporation Council, we have to take a vote on this tonight, we can't hold it. We got to either say yes or say no. So I'm going to be a no for the reasons just outlined.
Alderman, our Corporation Council and Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, just just very briefly, Alderman McMenamin outlined kind of the position that's in. This happened, the agreement, the tentative agreement, the agreement between the negotiating committees occurred prior, you know, pre-COVID situation. We have an obligation to present it to the city council. It's a decision on the part of the city council to accept or reject it, as Alderman McMenamin outlined in whole, meaning it can't be in pieces. Now, in this particular case, the the one thing I would just put in perspective slightly is that this bargaining unit consists of only two individuals. And so we have an obligation to present it because in good faith we agreed to it. However, it is a judgment call, it is a vote of the city council to accept or reject it, if that if that answers the question.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, for Corporate Council, how many how many man-hours is spent on negotiations of these types of contracts?
It depends on the contract and the number of issues. Some some contracts are actually relatively simple. This kind of falls in that category, there were not a tremendous number of issues unlike some of the other contracts that can become very complex simply because of the matter of issues that are are being discussed.
Well, my 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 concern is, you know, we bargain in good faith, and then if it comes to council after everybody's agreed and we say no, does that put us in a position where where it's a we're going to get hit with a with a lawsuit? Because personally, I mean, I'm for this, you know, I think the staff does a good job of negotiating for us, and I and I think it's a if you to for us to say no, it's basically a slap in the face of some of our our staff.
My, if, Mayor, should I just just briefly? My own comment on this is I believe that under the circumstances, the agreement was made in good faith, it's relatively small contract relative to the issues. I think the total economics are maybe in the range of under three or four thousand a year in terms of the additional costs. So my recommendation, respectful recommendation, would be to consider proceeding with it, given the relatively small impact and the fact that we agreed to it, the union voted on it. However, that being said, going forward, going forward, and we do have approximately fifteen contracts later in this year of larger bargaining units, the whole issue of COVID is going to be the overriding question as to what happens in this in this year.
Alderman Redpath?
I understand Alderman McMenamin's concerns about the budget, we all do, the COVID thing has overtaken us with surprise. But as Alderman Hanauer said, this is a this is a contract that's really good for the city and good for the good for the the union that's negotiating it. If, you know, if we if we stop contracts like this, what's to stop us from going back and trying to go back on other contracts? You know, we have to proceed with what's best for the city, and this contract at a one point seven increase a year is is pretty good because I've seen over the last thirty 1.7 increase a year is, is, is pretty good because I've seen over the last 30 years, I've seen some contracts go out this door that should have never went out the door. The negotiating that we're doing for these contracts are, has been done very well. Uh, we're doing very good for the city of Springfield, and I think it's important for us to support this contract. You know, the bottom line is, is that we're gonna have to make some tough decisions, and, uh, no matter if we pass this contract or not, if we get to the end of this year and find out we're in trouble, there's gonna, we're gonna have to call all the unions and talk to them about some concessions. So, I encourage everyone to support this contract. I think it's important to the city. I think it's a, a good contract for us, too.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance, uh, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will now read the roll.
Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Yes.
Alderwoman Turner?
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie?
Aye.
Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSensio?
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman?
No.
Alderwoman Conley?
Yes.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
Nine ayes and one nay, Mayor. Two nays or one, one?
One nay.
We can clarify that?
Yeah.
Alderwoman DeSensio, was that a no or a, yeah?
It was a yes.
Oh, yes. Okay. Next item on the, so it was nine voting yes, one voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2020-156, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Springfield and the Police Benevolent and Protective Association Unit Number Five for a period of March 1st, 2018 through February 28th, 2022. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2020-155 on final passage.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Alderman McMiniman?
This is a much more complicated situation. Uh, and, uh, it'd be, it'd take a while to summarize a 39-page arbitration decision that was rendered February 24. Uh, it was a split decision. It was three arbitrators. There were three issues that went to the arbitrators. The city won the wage issue on a two-to-one vote. The, uh, there was a issue having to do with, uh, sick time, um, payments, and, uh, that, the city lost that one. And then the residency was a really important issue, and that was a split decision. Uh, the city lost it on a two-to-one vote. Uh, so far, the city's been successful in, in negotiating residency with all the other unions. It's, it's disappointing, um, that we haven't been able to achieve that with our police. This is the second time it's gone to arbitration. Um, it's been a split decision each of those two times. Um, because of the lengthy negotiations, this four-year contract is looking backwards two years and two months, I believe it is, and so we've just got 22 months left. Uh, we, we had a residency referendum, believe it or not, eight years ago this fall, and the, the city overwhelmingly, 60% to 40% approved the, the residency idea. It was an advisory referendum. We had to wait for Mayor Langfeller to get in here, to get enough votes to pass it in, in, uh, 2016, I believe we passed it. I hope, you know, our police have an extraordinarily difficult job, and, but we need their support on this. And, uh, so I'm gonna be a no vote for two reasons. One, because of the financial situation the city's in, and we need, need to renegotiate. But number two, because of the residency issue. We, we need loyalty to our city. Uh, so I understand that 40% of our police now live outside the city limits. That, that's, we, we need to keep those high-income jobs and households within the city, the, the population within our, our city, paying the real estate taxes, et cetera, which Mayor Langfeller has also often talked about. I, I think, too, it's important to realize the operational handicaps we face when so many of our police live outside the city. Three years ago, I asked our police chief of our neighborhood police officers, and we got seven beats, we got seven neighborhood police officers, how many of those live outside the city limits? And it was four of the seven lived outside our city limits. Uh, I was really impressed by our, one of our current neighborhood police officers who lives in Beat 500, and, um, he, he does live in the neighborhood that he serves as neighborhood police officer. He, one night in his backyard, he heard the shots fired in the neighborhood. You know, it's that kind of, um, local understanding and participation that we need from our police. And so, I just want to explain, not to get into the residency debate in more detail. We could talk about it for quite a while, but, um, I just want to explain the, my no vote on this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. All opposed, vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Fulgenzie?
Aye.
Alderman Proctor?
Aye.
Alderwoman DeSensio?
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman?
No.
Alderwoman Conley?
Yes.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
Nine ayes and one nay, Mayor. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2020-165, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing the execution of contract UQ 20-02-88, Watermeters with Midwest Meter Inc. and United Systems and Software Inc. in the amount of $754,682.70 for the water disvision of the Office of Public Utilities for emergency passage.
So moved.
Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2020-150 on final passage. Been moved by Alderman Redpath, seconded by Alderman Hanauer. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will now read the, call the roll.
Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Yes.
Alderwoman Turner?
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Proctor?
Aye.
Alderwoman DeSensio?
Aye.
Alderman McMiniman?
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley?
Yes.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
Ten ayes and no nays, Mayor. Mayor votes yes on the emergency passage, so it's 11-0, ordinance passes. Next item on the agenda is 2020-184, an ordinance affirming ordinance 95-03-2020, authorizing condemnation of real property for the purpose of constructing usable Segment 5 of the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works for emergency passage. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2020-184 on final, or emergency passage.
So moved. Second, Fulgenzie.
Been moved by Alderman Redpath, seconded by Alderman Fulgenzie. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will call the roll.
Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Fulgenzie?
Aye.
Alderman Proctor?
Aye.
Alderwoman DeSensio?
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman?
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley?
Yes.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
Mayor Langfelder?
Aye.
Eleven ayes and no nays. Thank you. Is there any unfinished business come before the city council? As a reminder, we missed it tonight, but it's seven o'clock every night, uh, ringing the bells in support of our first responders and healthcare workers. And if you don't have bells, if you go out and cheer or what have you, uh, they appreciate it, and it's a good way for everybody to come together in the coronavirus and moving in that direction. Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, uh, on Friday nights, seven o'clock to, or eight o'clock, is it eight o'clock to eight twenty, I believe it is, they have a, uh, through different, um, uh, football fields and, uh, baseball fields and that throughout the, the high schools. They're turning their lights on in support of the senior class of, uh, 2020. Um, because, a, as we know, that a lot of them have lost, uh, their seasons due to the COVID. Um, so, just wanted to put that out there. I know, uh, um, many of the, uh, high school fields are, are doing it. I think Southeast, I think, uh, I know S.H.E. is, um, you know, some of our Rochester, you know, a lot of other, other outlying sites. So, it's, it's, it's kinda neat.
That's good. Yeah, that's a difficult situation. So, that shows support's appreciated. Any other unfinished business? Any, uh, new business come before the council? Alderwoman DeSensio?
Yes, I would just like to wish Alderman Fulgenzie and his lovely wife, Sandy, a happy anniversary. 52 years of marriage. I couldn't make it five minutes, so hats off to you, Alderman Fulgenzie.
That's good.
You have to, you have to thank my wife.
(laughing)
Very good.
But thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, um, as a reminder, I think, uh, Director Yezel mentioned the EDC meeting Thursday at three o'clock, and it will be livestreamed, so you can watch it on the computer or cable access channel. Or if, uh, Alderman or anybody wants to zoom in, uh, get with Julia Freibert, we'd be able to make that happen. Or anybody in the public that wants to, uh, participate in, uh, for comment period. Alderman Redpath?
Um, is, is Director Dahl on the call?
Uh, Director Dahl?
I am.
Could you be prepared to, uh, give us an update on, uh, the condition of the occupancy in the City of Springfield and the hotels, and what the trend is looking at? Uh, I understand that the hotel motel money is gonna take a massive hit, uh, in the near future. Could you be prepared to, to give us a presentation on that at the committee of the hall?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, with that, go over the convention, uh, you know, the lost and then what was rescheduled, if you would, too.
Will do.
And any other, uh, new business from any of the council members? Uh, just a point of notification, uh, I've been on WICS Facebook Live, and Chief Reine is gonna take my spot this, uh, Thursday at 3:30. So, if you want to ask Chief Reine any questions, uh, feel free to tune in. And I think that's it. Is there a motion for adjourn, or anybody wish to address the council? Had anybody signed up?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post, say nay. Motion carries. We're adjourned. Take care, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.